Hello, everybody. Hello, everyone. My name is Tom Zipfel. I'm one of the commissioners. Just want to get us started. We want to start off with a big thank you. We do not normally, as you can imagine, local government does not normally get a crowd like this on a regular basis. So we are thrilled to see a crowd. And tonight is just a wonderful celebration. So I want to thank you on behalf of all the commissioners for coming here. And I know that there's family and friends. And tonight is supposed to be fun and exciting for all of you. And we hope that it is. We have three people to be sworn in. And Judge Andrea Duffy was kind enough to come again. She was with us two years ago to do some swearing ins. And so our first commissioner, who was re-elected, Jerry Andrus, Ward Three. Ward Five. I'm gonna put my glasses on.
Testing, is it on? Okay. All right, I am thrilled to be here again tonight to wish all of you a wonderful another term. Or in the case of our other two acres, a great first term. Oh. We're all situated, right? Okay. Please repeat after me. I Gerald Andrus solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the Commonwealth. I will discharge the duties, Commissioner of Hatfield Township, Montgomery County, with fidelity. Two Bibles, not just one. We're going to be doubly oth-ed here. Here, turn around so we can... Great. Please repeat after me. I Jennifer Di Lustraco solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of Commissioner of Commissioner of Hatfield Township, Montgomery County, with fidelity.
And last, but certainly not least, Shahidul Partha, Ward Three.
Choreography here. Are we good now?
Good now.
Okay. Partha solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of Commissioner of Hatfield Township, Montgomery County, fidelity. Congratulations.
I'll do some more pictures. All right. The Andrus family, everybody come on down. The Andrus family. Oh, you have 87 people at your...
They lock up so well, but we really impressed. That's true. I know, they are all true.
I got shoulders slight, slide in.
Hey. About next is...
They keep adding, I'm gonna have to keep moving back.
All right, Mr. Partha. Family, friends, whoever you like.
All right. And I can't see you. I know it's sometimes the point, but... All right, guys, ready? Is that what in there? All right, eyes on me.
I swear to God.
And I can't help it. I'm more than totally grandstanding. Grandstanding.
I thought he was gonna say what you were asking.
You gotta do what you gotta do to get by. Anybody says anything different? That's right.
Sure, he hasn't been able to walk since.
Pass that thing down?
All the power.
You know, that's what I want. It's a gavel, and then I get to pass it back, which is fun. Thank you.
Watch your fingers.
Hey. Good evening. I'm Kristen Pianzio. I'm the solicitor for the township. I get to hold the gavel for about five minutes as President Pro Tem. And with that, I'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Andrus.
Here.
Commissioner Lustraco.
Here.
Commissioner Partha.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Zipfel.
Here.
I'd ask that we all rise for the pledge of allegiance and ask that our newly elected commissioners lead us. Okay, our first order of business is the election of a president of the Board of Commissioners. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Tom Zipfel as Board President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Congratulations.
The most memorable part of that was that Kristen had to hand over the gavel. So I know that she wanted to use that all evening, so we get to take it back. So the next order of business, though, is to elect a vice president of the Board of Commissioners. As chair, I'll make a motion for Bob Rogers as vice president. Is there a second?
I second my motion.
Any other motions? All right, hearing none, then I'll call the question. All in favor of making Bob Rogers vice president of the Board of Commissioners say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Congratulations, Bob. Okay, that's kind of the... Kind of the... There was fun stuff, then there's administration, and now there's some fun stuff again. But before we do that, any citizens' comments? Any citizens' comments on agenda items? All right, hearing none, we're going to go down to the podium for what we are... A lot of you are thankfully still here for, which is our Hatfield Hero presentation. For Matt to see you. Matt and Tom, maybe if you would join me? So it would not be an understatement for me to tell you that we have been talking about this evening, not just for the swearing in of the newly elected commissioners, but because of this moment for weeks now, we've been talking about it. Because we've had some fantastic Hatfield heroes. We have a program that we started back in March of 2021. Lou Farrell, some of you may know him, was our first Hatfield hero. Wonderful man. Hands out peanut butter and jelly sandwiches to the homeless. And that, I tell you that story because that was kind of the catalyst for us creating this evening of recognition. And so we've had a number of other people who have fallen into a similar category. But then, when I received a phone call from Roseanne, Tom's wife, right? And you know, Roseanne, put your hand up. Yep. Roseanne reached out for me and she said, you know what? This man, Matt, just did this wonderful thing for me and my family, and he should be recognized somehow. And so that's how the ball got rolling. And it was perfectly situated because we already have this recognition. And there's no greater way of explaining what a hero really is than to tell you what took place here. Some of you may know already, but for those of you who do not, Tom Pepe is a resident of Montgomery Township, was out for a run near Lansdale area, near his home on Friday, November 17th, just this last November. And he collapsed on the side of the road while he was running. And Matt, to see her, was with his wife. And they were driving down the road, and they saw him. And they jumped out of their van to help, and they called 911 right away. Now, this is the part of the story that Roseanne has explained to me that, if I'm going to describe it correctly, is just unbelievably amazing. Not only did Matt provide CPR to Tom and save his life, but he had no real CPR training before that. He remembered some type of training, kind of in the back of his mind, on how to do it. And him, and then another gentleman, whose name I'm not sure if he's here, I'm not sure if we know who he is, came over and helped Matt keep rhythm of the heartbeats for Tom while he was giving CPR. And they used the song for the rhythm of staying alive, right?
Yeah.
And so I'm sure every one of you who's old enough to understand what that song is has now got that rhythmic notion, and they said, okay, that makes sense. That totally makes sense. He literally made chest compressions on Tom until the EMTs showed up for about five minutes, five and a half minutes. And between the two of them and Roseanne, they got the EMTs there. They got 911 there as fast as can be. And we are remarkably happy to say that Tom is doing very well.
Yes.
Fully recovered after a procedure, as I understand. And I have to tell you, this is just one of those moments where, when we heard the story, and then we talked about the story, not just because we have this opportunity to recognize them, but it just, to us, it just showed the fragility of life, right? Those... What's the chance that Matt would say, you know what? I'm gonna jump out. He was there. That him and his wife, Risa, were there, they're gonna jump out, and they were gonna help. Even though they didn't really have necessarily the expertise, the full expertise of knowing how to do it. And then to do it, and then the outcome is this extraordinary. That is just a moment in time, not only connects the two of you for forever, but it just, it's absolutely worthy of recognition. We are incredibly grateful to you, Matt, for what you've done. I mean, undoubtedly, you embody the best of Hatfield Township. Tom, I know that you had maybe a little less of a... It was an event for you, but maybe an event that you would have preferred to have skipped, but we are...
I heard about it.
You heard about it? We are incredibly pleased that you're here with us and that the two of you have had this opportunity to be recognized. So in addition to the people, the people who I've already talked about, we also had the Montgomery Township Police Department, who came and provided aid. And we also invited them and some VMSC volunteer, Medical Corps VMSC heroes, who we have some awards for. And if you're here, please come up. Mariah Cox, the lead paramedic. David Holmsey, also AEMT. David here. Richard Socks, EMT. Stephanie Traub, paramedic. And Shane Wheeler, their chief. Chief's not here tonight? Okay, that's all right. He can get a round of applause. Shane is top-notch, no doubt about it. So Montgomery Township Police Department heroes who may be here. Officer Hannah Moran. Canine Officer Joseph McGiggin. Canine Officer Daniel Rose. Officer Peter Byrne. And Patrol Sergeant Joseph Scott. So to the police, and also to the EMTs in particular, we want to thank you not just for this evening, but for what you do every day. Because for us, this is maybe a moment where we realize the significance of it. But you probably see events like this more often than anyone else. And we want to thank you for everything that you do. So, thank you. So in honor of that, and maybe to embarrass them just a little bit, they all get a nice award, so... The medal is HH for Hatfield Hero. Okay. And I know I already said thank you a couple of times, but this award is the one that brought us here tonight. And I want to thank Matt for just being a truly fantastic person. He's not a person who jumped out and took his phone and videotaped what was going on. He put all that away, jumped right in, and saved a life. There's no greater way to say thank you, for us anyway, than this small moment. Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's truly an honor to stand here and be honored this way, recognized. I truly just feel like a random guy that was placed in a position, and I fulfilled the duty that I had. I was never gonna leave another human on the side of the road. If I could have just been a blockade, that would have been as good. Or just to be a human, an energy, as he goes to the next place. So I'm glad that that didn't happen that day. And that everything fell together. And I can't thank everyone that volunteers their time, you know, whether it's just for what they get out each and every day, or for monetary gains, whatever the reason behind it is, it doesn't matter. The fact is that, once you were done with us, you were on to the very next place. And you never get to see what happens, right? My wife gets to hear a lot about what you guys get to see each and every day as a therapist. And so thank you for recognizing me. And so, thank you for recognizing me, and truly the everyday heroes, the people that go to help out their neighbors, that, you know, just care about someone that's just there each and every day. It doesn't have to be a big thing to make your, it's a strong word, so, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna ask if we could go over some, for some pictures? If that's okay?
I figured as much. I guess we're all drinking or something. It's around the corner from the township building.
It was breakdown, wasn't it?
I probably could have done it better, but.
No doubt, I'm sure.
It's live.
Get over there meeting now.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Time, Tom, if anything, this is proving how important this stuff is.
It's in public view?
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna put your new extended family.
Yeah, you know. I don't think I'd do that, but still, give them a lot of credit for getting up on.
It is. Oh, yeah. I think you're entitled.
Probably still wouldn't have had to ask you.
I think Jerry's at another family reunion.
Yes.
He had the biggest group. It was like six times.
I think we lost, we lost our Township Manager.
None, he stands out, I don't see him.
No.
He was in the back. Oh, good.
I got the Iden ship in the way.
I lost my Township Manager. In the hallway?
Everyone was on the, you know, this.
Do you want him?
I'll wait, I'll wait. I'm gonna leave, and I think they've been trapped. Usco Township, still waiting.
Oh, no.
How long did you do that for?
Um, four years. I'm actually past president because there's no.
All right, we have a couple of things that we need to do, appointments to make. We'll make it as swift as possible so everyone can not only get home, but also go celebrate, if that's the plan. We have, let's see, two, four, six, eight, 10 different professional appointments. And if the Commissioners are comfortable with this, I'll take one motion to appoint all of those, actually, the resolution I have to do separate. So, let's just do the first one. Is there a motion to appoint and approve the employment agreement and Township Manager, Secretary, Deputy Secretary for Aaron Bebrow? Resolution 2401, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrus.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Any questions or comments? For those of you who don't know, this is what, it's something of a housekeeping item. What we do is we approve Aaron's continued employment, which is just something that, quite frankly, we think that he's probably the best Township Manager, not only in Montgomery County, but even further around. So, this is the easiest vote that I think we'll ever have, because he's just that fantastic. So, with that, I will call a question. All in favor of Resolution 2401, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. All right.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, you're welcome, more than welcome. So, for the other professional appointments, we'll just make one motion, if that's okay. So, is there a motion to approve the professional appointments listed in your agenda, B through J?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestrako. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, then I'll call the question. All in favor of those appointments, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved.
Thank you.
That includes our Solicitor, that's right.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Solicitor. All right, Volunteer Appointment Boards. For those of you who don't know, we have a number of people, residents, who volunteer their time in various boards, which includes the Building Code Appeals Board, the HTMA, North Penn Hospital and Education Authority Planning Commission, Vacancy Board, Zoning Hearing Board, Parks and Rec, and Industrial Development Authority. These are people who are, these are unpaid positions, as are the Commissioners, by the way, but these people are not elected, they are appointed by the Commissioners to serve a length of a term. And these are the people who have willingly volunteered to, to, to help out their township, their community by sitting on these boards. Some boards are very, very active, others are less so. But it's remarkably important that we have people to fill them, because we need to hear the resident's voice, and that's where these folks come in handy. So, I will, just to, again, for brevity's sake, is there a motion to approve the Volunteer Board Appointments that are listed in your agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrus.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, then I will call a question. All in favor of approving the Volunteer Board Appointments in your agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, they are approved. And that is our action items for the evening. I want to say thank you again for everyone who showed up. It's exciting to have two new Commissioners, three new elected Commissioners join us, Jerry's Continue On. And we're looking forward to a great 2024. And so, unless there's any citizens' comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrus.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. All in favor of adjournments, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, we are approved. Thanks for coming out, folks, everyone have a great New Year.